Meeting to order. First up is auditor and clerk to discuss the $1,000 for election year voter registration pay and the clerk and auditor stipend for the election year for the clerk.
As far as the clerk goes, there's nice to come to a place that allows for the county to use our county general for voter registration and we're having to save a thousand dollars. I did not realize during budget period that the double bit for 2,000 for this year. It was not changed in the matrix stuff, but I've received the first thousand and I'm asking for the second thousand dollar registration. But also, there is new legislation implemented to place on July 1st of 2024 that having councils can amend their pay wage. Sorry, that ordinance, I'm sorry, the ordinance, to include an additional up to $2,500 stipend for clerks being years that their county general will actually help, which would be a basic 2024 pay issue. This is to help offset all of the extra hours and time and responsibilities that clerks have during the election year. I am out here during early voting at least two times a day, if not more, I was at first second time for the last week. The clerks are required, we see how early person voting the two Saturdays before the election, we don't require it to be here. And usually when it's early voting, I come in at about 7:30 and I leave here at four and then I still have to go back to my office and there are things we have to do to them today. So I come in on Saturdays evening when I'm early voting. I come in on Saturdays and run reports and get public on things like what and stuff that I can't do during early voting elections. So I am asking the council for the additional $2,500 for this year. So July 1st for me added to 2,500 hours for the clerk, they also added it for the auditor because the auditor spends so much time doing so much extra work other than one. She will be is obligated to do. For me, I do the IT liaison and make all meetings or several things that my office does and takes care of and is not standard for auditor work. So that's the reason why legislation says it could be amended. And so we're asking for 2024. You already approved it from Teresa for next year for 2025, but since this legislation came through in July 1st, I'm asking for 2024.
Any questions for it? What?
I spent six years in the county office before I knew anything. She's absolutely, she's one of the best.
The, you have any ideas of if we're to pay this, where the extra funds come out of?
I all, I all assess my secret maybe just on our county general. This is me.
Joe Greitman, I'm all, you're asking for the 2,500 plus the 1,000. I have that now.
All right, we have a motion to approve 3,500 total, 2,500 stipend, 1,000 election year voter registration pay, second half, and auditors, $2,500 stop. Second?
No, most of it, right, he said 2,500 for auditor?
Yes, 2,500 for the auditor, what they're asking. 2,500 for the clerk, and then the, the extra $1,000 that they raised, election year voter registration pay, $1,000 originally, $1,000. So again.
We have a voter registration vote due?
Yes, we have all voter registration.
Do they have a person, like, do you need more, she's a bill year ago, they have a person does that?
There's one thing on everything.
So you're one to do that?
I help with that.
What I really, they have two Ds.
Yeah, two Ds, I know it's a money thing. It's a big job, we have done it on the election years, it's still a big job. They did the state, what did they want, but it was making them, they had voter registration.
I'm gonna correct my voice, I think I say 20, I bet 20. Sorry.
Again, we have a motion, we have a second? Aye for a lack of a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I vote in favor of it, so.
And the auditor then has to make up?
That would be not probably the best way in the world because it's actually money going to her, so I would say that.
We don't early vote this, it's a tie.
I don't vote. All right, I'll rescind my vote.
Well, I can't feel that it's coming in late, you know. Here we are trying to improve the budget for 2025, and this shit can roll out all the time, I think. So I think it's, I think it's, I have to try to vote, but I'm saying, it's, it's, we improved the electric.
I don't have any other issues, that's why. It's 2500, that's what it's, it's 1000.
Well, there was a motion, there was a motion and a vote, didn't pass. All right, we'll move on to transfers. We have sheriff, 4,500 from janitorial supplies to tires.
I have a question. So the thousand dollars that goes to the town, that's already in the matrix?
The first thousand.
What, yeah, that's supposed to go to, it's already in the matrix, so wouldn't that be a wage revision or whatever that needs to go to her? But if we've already approved it in the matrix?
She's already received that thousand dollars. She's saying that the legislation would ask to be $2,000, so she's asking for 2,000, but it's not.
I think it wasn't legislation, I think it was board pay that we changed.
Just to fill the registration.
I'm, I'm, I think it's different.
Yeah, it's different.
So the board paid, we changed, we changed it from the thousand to $2,000. And then they get updated in the matrix. So she made it a thousand for 4,000. Well, you and I sat at the table talking about board pay, I'm right at your.
Oh, yeah.
It's not board pay, it's the future. They can board pay 4,000, is that correct? She gets her board pay, this is voter registration. So she's saying that it's supposed to be 2,000, but they'll monitor 1,000 in the matrix, and she's asking for the other 1,000. That, your thoughts would be correct?
It would be a correction. Something for board, like, to correct, be a correction. Already, it's coming out of the matrix?
I thought she already got her pay from that board.
Yeah, I think that, the.
We owe somebody a lot of pay, but you know, I mean.
Right, yeah, and that, well, that's what I want to understand is, I don't have the, 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 the election year voter registration pay, that's not a board pay, that's, that is something that, yeah, that's something that was set down by legislation where you get.
This is, this, the voter registration stipend, there's been a thousand dollars, and this, this whole voter registration will be tied to the board pay, and they increased it to 2,000, but it's probably only a thousand dollars.
So that is board paid.
It's not board, it's voter registration.
We've got a thing for the board, it's board, I think that's.
Okay, well, yeah, that's, I mean, however, but it's, it's, it's something that was, that was already voted on and we changed the pay to, from 1,000 to 2,000, so that the pay is already at 2,000. It was just not changed in the 2024 matrix to 2,000, left at 1,000. Was all the other, everything that was made, every, all the board revision, they started at, at the beginning of, well, it started, but it was done this year.
But I think it changed from 1,000 to 2,000. But we started off at 2,000.
I think that needs to be looked at, maybe a minute to find out. It's still too valuable, it's too valuable.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would agree, I would agree with, we need, we need to make sure that if, if, if it was voted on and it was approved at 2,000 and it was just an oversight in the matrix, then it needs to be adjusted, matrix, paid out. So, address that at our next meeting. Okay, then 4,500 from janitorial supplies to tubes and tires, sheriff, 5,000 from household supplies to equipment repairs, 10,000 from part-time dispatch, overtime dispatch, EMS, 55760 from special services to EMS management, LEPC, 1,611 dollars, 53 cents for travel, and 600, or excuse me, 365 dollars and 35 cents from dues and subscriptions to training, prosecutor, 2,414 dollars from part-time help with equipment, 95 dollars from part-time help to equipment. EMA, 300 dollars from disaster repair and supplies, and 100 dollars from equipment repairs to gas, oil, extra. Health department, 1,100 dollars from gas, oil, 1,100 dollars from tires and tubes, and 2,000 dollars from medical, dental, to miscellaneous services. Remember the transfers, the additionals that need advertised, we can remove part of it because of the joint session, 30,000 of it for inmate meals still needs to be advertised, the one that I had down for additional need to be approved, that still needs to be advertised, 15,000 for communications equipment, then the highway, had one come in late today for 418,275 dollars for their community crossing grant. I'll entertain a motion to approve, discuss.
I'll make the motion to approve transfers as presented.
All right, we have a motion to approve the transfers as presented, we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes.
Was the community crossings that came in late, was that an additional that needs advertised?
418,000, so we have appropriated 4,000 for community crossings, and 400, they actually got a million, 400,000, so I have to incorporate that extra.
Would it be advertised? Yeah. Okay, I'll make it, the motion to approve the additionals that need advertised, the sheriff, EMS, and the highway department as presented.
Uh, the EMS, we actually removed because that's going to be paid out of the ARPA fund, discussion earlier.
Okay, so I'll, take away my motion.
Sheriff, highway?
The sheriff, just 30,000 dollars for inmate meals, and the 418,575 dollars, that would work for the community crossing match for the county highway, those to be advertised. I think that's.
The 2,000 for the, the.
That's just a layover additional.
Yeah, but that, that, it didn't get advertised, it was.
Okay, then I'll add that to.
Which are, we voted la, last month, actually, advertised, guess it really didn't vote at all. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Proven signed, the 9-9, 2024 regular meeting minutes, and the 10-1, 2024 special session. Everybody seen? Minutes?
Make a motion to approve the 9-9 regular session minutes as distributed.
All right, we have a motion to approve the 9-9, 2024 regular. Second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. We have the adoption of the 2025 budget. Motion. Approve the adoption of the 2025 budget as presented.
So, 2025 budget, is that, that we discussed, the special session?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to adopt the 2025 budget as presented, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Everybody should have seen the, the budget that came out, the copy of the things that we discussed in the meeting. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Okay, then adopt the Van Buren Township 2025 budget, everybody seen that?
I didn't see it.
Out.
When do we get sent?
Friday?
Make a motion to approve as presented, so Van Buren Township 2025 budget.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Okay, then adopt the Van Buren Township 2025 budget, everybody seen that?
I didn't see it.
Out.
When do we get sent?
Friday?
Make a motion to approve as presented, so Van Buren Township 2025 budget.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Then, we had a soil and water wage correction. The, uh, person, soil and water is getting paid at a, at a different rate of what was approved in the matrix, and I'll let Laura explain a few more on that, because that to be resolved.
Well, I think there was just a misunderstanding, uh, when you, or the person, or the person came on, or that you, the person came in the matrix. So we let that, we let that, and realized that there was a mistake, so that's, it's just a, just a correction to it. And the other, our department changes, school mostly, whole time department, um, we have, have all of the changes from, they, going from maintenance to health department, and then, um, we should have, um, Chris Anderson, who was going for the, who did maintenance, and then we've got new coach, so all of those changes up there. I think that's it.
All right, any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the wage correction and revisions as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Are we going to retroactively, we're going to soil and water? Are we going to retroactively, we're going to soil and water?
42, this sheet, the effective date is her hiring date, 8/16/24. Seven motion I'll make. So we can go retro, approve the revised relevance, yes, please.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Passes. Okay, we have down on here, bike motion. All right, uh, there's been some discussion about, uh, now that we're starting to receive some of the revenue from solar income, that might be good for the, for the council to think about setting some stipulations, what that money should be used for, what part of it to go to, well, a couple of things, number one, uh, I know it's been discussed in other meetings, so do we want, do they want each, each solar project to go into its own funds? Boss Creek, Mammoth, everything broke up individually, uh, put it into one, then whether we want to, whether the council wants that money, what they want, some of the rules or guidelines for, for future use of that, or courthouse bondage, or, you know, equipment, put some of it, these, future use, for any day, what are some of them, the boxes they want that money to go to, uh, not that we have to figure that out today, but I think it's something that needs to be thought about, go, so how do we want to tackle this, so maybe that we can decide today to, go, put a group of a couple of people together, with a couple council people, a commissioner. What's some of the thoughts from the board on how they want to tackle?
I think we should, uh, if you look to see what some other counties are doing, please reinvent the wheel.
Agree with that.
And, so, county, uh, I'm, everybody, do what they can, bring it back next meeting.
That would work here.
See, it's, it's, I need to see it all, spend some stuff, like, people that are looking at the projects, or townships.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think, yo, like you said, you know, it's.
It's the community, a lot of.
Right, there's other uses outside of just what's called county, yeah.
You know, we've already, that, you know, we take that, used to call it something, capable of taxes, and it's, you know, they call it economic development, you know, that, cheating the school out of their money, and cheating the library out of their money, so maybe, you know, if you go there, and we fight, kind of, that stuff, you know, if you come back, we can make it.
No, it's not, that, that's why, that's why I thought it'd be good.
I just wanted to break it up.
So, I mean, you know, I can reach out to, like, Stark County and see what some of their stuff is, go, those, face people down south, so, couple, two or three people could, somebody else pick a county to try and get some ideas that would, anything we bring back would be helpful. Um, we have the, you know, only thing left on the budget hearings now is matrix adoption, which is, we have to do it on our November 11th meeting, um, and we have part-time wages, uh, that's really.
We have to factor this all in, but.
Yep.
But we have to, like, uh, we can't, we can't, you know, you can't worry about that much, and we want to, you know, like, all that, all that money to receive, you know, this point in time, as a temporary place to support the, to help the.
I think, yeah, I think the first thing we need to figure out is, that pretty quickly, even if we don't set the parameters for what the use of the money is, is how we're going, you know, we're going to put it in, go, how we're, how we're going to set the funds up so we can get the money in the right place, and then it won't be able to be spent until somebody comes in front of the board and asks for that money.
Well, Laura, I talked to you one day, like, Karen, I'm sure it's been a month, probably, you, you said we could, like, get one, like, we don't need a, like, one, you have subphones, how he told me.
I think they have, um, creating, we just sold, we, for that, we lost three subphones, it was about 500,000, 500,000 dollars, um, we could have, we could have one set up, and then we could receive all of it, and then we could see that, et cetera. One night, we just said, let me tell, what Moss Creek gave you, what now, so we take it, um, we can set it up to go to ready day farm, which is also basically kept, um, I think you guys did it during day organs, here recently, um, we put it in there, we can set it up such that it comes from Mammoth and Moss Creek, we can, you know, show exactly where it came from, you know, necessarily that created the farm, but then you can Do not necessarily that created in farm, but then.
So rainy day, keep this from free. And it would, it would be easier to take care of that.
But I would have that in the order that you send it out instead of, um, to all of you, so you can bring it.
Yeah, cause I would.
See what it was used for, and that's what you like.
Yeah, I agree we could do it. Best way to keep track of it, but also the best way for the audit costs to keep track of it. We could say it, yes. I mean, I agree.
Yeah, but I would be, you know, I just want to make sure that introduce it into like rainy day, you know, as an example, where we have an ordinance already says how that money is spent. That, that money wouldn't fall underneath that bucket, because that could be all wrong. Does that answer your question, Stella? Uh, but I, yeah, I would say that, you know, we need to figure that out as soon as possible, since we have money setting here at some point. That. Um, alright, uh, back to, uh, part-time wages. I know at our last, uh, uh, special session, there was some conversation about part-time wages. Um, you know, we got to approve the matrix adoption here on the eleventh, so we need to have, uh, you know, need to know what, what that's gonna be set up as so Laura can put the matrix. I know there was discussion of just doing it, you know, at a five percent raise. I know that was, uh, something Mike talked about and all. I can say, I, I, I understand the simplicity of it and how it works. I don't think that, you know, just like giving cost of living raises wasn't gonna correct wage, wage indifference with full-time employees. I don't think it's gonna correct part-time employees. I know I reached out to a couple, you know, to a few departments, uh, this week and talked to them. And I mean, what we did with the wages, the way we adjusted them, set them up. I didn't have anybody come back complaining about it or asking, saying it was not working well for them. In fact, uh, uh, speaking to one department, that's the first time they've gone through a pay raise or a period of time where they don't have conversations anymore about pay raise. I know others made comments about every meeting, we were talking about the matrix and all. And I can look at this year and we've had very little, very little. Nope, well, nobody's come in and asked for, for, for wage adjustments, so, uh.
I'll make a motion to do the part-time tiered pay structure off the matrix for part-time pay. It's three percent less of
What their tier would be.
What their tier would be. So let's say they're zero to two in the matrix and the pay structure's twelve dollars. I'm just throwing numbers out there. It'd be three percent less of twelve dollars. If they were.
And in every, every scenario that, that we worked out in the different positions throughout the county, kept the same, the same structure, uh, of, uh, that the state uses for, for classification jobs. Same as we did when we did the full-time wage structure. That's what we, same thing for the part-time wage structure. And just like I said, it, it, they get decreased by three percent of what the full-time person makes. Of course, they don't get benefits back either. Uh, and it, you know, it, it, it helps because if a part-time person you know, has a CDL and their job, they're gonna get paid for, paid for, for that. And no, there was no part-time position that lost money. So a eighteen, eighteen something an hour right now, I believe it is for part-time. Nobody's below that. Everybody, very few that, little bit above it, everybody else went up. I, uh, sheriff, sheriff went up to, uh, twenty-three, I think it was.
Yeah, um, I mean, if you, if I'm on a six percent, you're staying three percent below regular depth. If it's six percent below the regular, you're twenty-three eighty-one for the certifying police officer.
I.
Three percent. Should be a little higher than twenty-three eighty-one, yeah. Is your exact right for the certifying police officers? Same way the CDOs. Cause our normal rate is twenty-five thirty-four for.
They said, they're, I, no, two, three meetings ago. It was first meeting of October, August.
Did you get twenty-five thirty-four for our rate?
I, I gotta look up the.
I didn't nail the name that says under the new part-time wages calculated into matrix tiers below the entry level for the full-time classification.
That's what we were using standards, now page twenty-three, we want that set up here. Now, if you, if you're the certifying part-time police officer, they can afford part-time.
Yeah, it comes, comes up at, yeah, it'd be about, yeah, about six percent. Comes up to about twenty-two dollars.
So it's six percent less. Would you want to say between what you presented, because I know we follow proceedings. Is it percentage then, or is it matrix tiers?
I think the, the, the percentage, I mean, it, cause each, each one of the, each one of the tiers is a percentage of the, so it, it's tiers down, but it, it, it also equivalates out to a, to a percentage because, you know, if, if, uh, you know, pat one is that, uh, you know, ten percent less what, what the, the, the top pay is, you know, the next, you know, so it, it falls into a percentage. But it, but every one of them can be on different, different departments, it could be a little bit different depending upon what the percentages were calculated out to set each, each scale.
So she will make a motion to approve this, to take that part-time scale?
Yes. I can't, I can't pull. Can't get on the internet, so.
Did you have a seven hour?
No, not yet. Alright, like I said, I, I'll get it, I'll get it to you, get you a copy of it. Like I said, it was forwarded out to everybody, but I'll get a copy of copy of it. Of course, I can't get on the internet. So we have, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
How much is this gonna cost?
In our, in our discussion that we had back in the, uh, August special session, we discussed the fact that, uh, when we're approving the budget to be, uh, published, that the, the rate would, they would use what they have in their, in their budgets. And then if they needed more money with the pay adjustment, if they can't manage it within what they had in their budgets, then they would have to come back and ask for more money. So we weren't increasing the budget to accommodate for it.
But we had that meeting at Tate's big office that time. Who told us how much that was gonna cost and why?
Talk about part-time.
I think, I think the, the, I know the rough, the rough numbers that if we, if you looked at what we paid now for, uh, for in overtime, it calculated out to be roughly around a hundred and forty thousand. But then the discussion was made that, that of, I know Jeff was very much involved in that. Some of you guys were as well about the fact that we wouldn't, uh, we wouldn't, uh, increase anybody's budgets. We would increase the wages to try and help them out, but then part that they would have to do on their side is to try and manage their overtime within that budget. And that's, that's possible. It's, uh, the thing is, is, you know, you know, I mean, you know, we got, you know, we got some department heads here, you know, you know, if they're, you know, it's a matter of, you know, are they able to keep their part-time people? Are they getting part-time people? I know, uh, you know, throw the sheriff a little bit under the bus. I know that the sheriff's department has people leaving, but we're paying out overtime right now because part-time people can go make more than eighteen dollars an hour or nineteen dollars an hour easily. So it's, it's, it's difficult to fill them position. And it's gonna cost the county a whole lot more money in overtime than it does part-time. But we have, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I, I, I mean, would everybody be fine with, I mean, we have, we have to drop something on the, on it for our next meeting. Uh, we'll just postpone it and I'll get all the information out to you guys and everything, and then we'll revote it. It. Well, like I said, it, it, each, you know, it's no different than when we did the, the, the pay for the, for the, uh, uh, you know, when we did the full-time pay, we based it off of percentage off of what, uh, you know, what, what the top pay was in the office, whether it was department head or whatever. It was based off of that. Then, then, and each one's a percent below it. And we pay, it would be two tiers down. Some were, some were three percent differences because we looked at the wage study, said what people should make in that. So it's not, it's not everyone is five percent, everyone's six percent, everyone's three percent. It's pretty close to the same every, on every tier, but everybody, bodies possibly a little bit different. And all, it's two tiers down. So one department might be five percent different, it might be two per, three percent different than another. Yes. Like I said, I'll, I'll, I'll resend out all the documentation again and everybody can look at it. I assume everybody's emails are working because like I said, I know there's a lot of stuff that was sent out for the meeting that are being said that they haven't seen. So I don't, you know, I know I'm getting it. I hope everybody else is. And if you're not, please let, uh, the groups or, or Rowan know or our interim IT person, auditor know, so they can get that corrected because if they're not getting it, I, I don't know that. Alright, so we'll, we'll hold off and we'll discuss that. If we, if, if we make the decisions on November eleventh, you can still have that put together and stuff to have it presented in time. Right. Well, I guess, but if we don't, if we don't vote on it tonight, you know, it's, we're not ready to vote on. That's, that's great. I'd rather have everybody have all the information that they need and feel comfortable making a motion. Do it, not for sure. But what do you, I guess, what do you need to meet your deadline? Okay, and we, we normally. Okay, so we can, we can still make the decision on the eleventh. I would say, I would say to help everybody, you'd want to see the matrix with the pay revisions as we discussed. And then then the other option that you wanted to do more work, can, but otherwise, otherwise it'll probably be a percentage pay raise and that's pretty figure out. Other budget, other matrix.
Is there even a major support part-time?
Well, the part-time is, is like, but they have some, except there are a few exceptions. Everything just got to three percent of the ways.
Uh, there's a couple different. That's more, it's more. Okay.
Gotta go to White County, see what Terry did.
Okay, this says. This is a part-time dispatcher, they're making seventeen, if you are reporting to this papers. The interaction will not happen tonight.
I round back. What I thought. But anyhow, uh, so anyhow, we'll, uh, yeah, just, I'll get, I'll get the information out to everybody, but then we can see what, what needs to be. Alright, any, any board reports? Any comments from the council? Right, any, any public comment? Yeah.
In regards to the public to live in part-time, I'm just confused there that I was looking at the article, especially with certain club about we just hear this for part-time longevity, we never have longevity for part-time that we count. I've never heard of that. And there is such a thing, I believe, that has on our sheriff's office. It's usually just a flat rating. Unless you're a deputy, they got higher ratings to compensate for that. She was very correct in that. We were talking about it, you said that it's based off of the longevity of that tier. Based on longevity, I've never heard of part-time being based on longevity.
Right, and, and well, that's, that's, that's where I, you know, I'm not sure where longevity conversation came in, because I don't know that there was any. I think that's. Okay, well, we'll, we'll get the information out and make sure that it's, it's clear as mud when it comes out. Thank you. Any other public comment? Yeah, is, is that part of the wage revision stuff? All right, we, we approved the, to set up a, uh, assistant, uh, dispatch director. Need to now approve change in the matrix. Yeah, we're not. All right, we have a motion to amend the matrix for the assistant dispatch. We have a second? We have a motion and a second? Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Passed. All right, there's no public comment. Please, everybody, make sure you get everything signed for Laura, and we will adjourn our meeting for ten fourteen, twenty twenty-four.